Council Bluff Savings Bank. Our goal is to help you, your families, and your businesses grow and prosper for generations. We take pride in our community, whether it's volunteering our time or helping individuals, families, and businesses succeed. We provide you with the personal service and attention you deserve. With over 220 years of banking experience, decisions are made locally. We are Council Bluff's people operating at Council Bluff's Bank to help Council Bluff's be a better place to work and live. Council Bluff Savings Bank. Hometown Banking. The way it used to be. Member FDIC.
I'd like to call the meeting to order and I'd like to take a second just to note, you know, we have many great employees here in the city of Council Bluff. And if you didn't catch the article in the newspaper a week to 10 days ago, our Public Works Department was recognized as one of 18 only to receive the award for snow removal. And tonight, one of our firefighters, Randy Schroeder, is being recognized as the Iowa Firefighter of the Year and would be a finalist for the National Firefighter of the Year. So, wanted to make sure people were aware of that. And can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Second.
I'd like to make a motion to separate G.
Separate G. Um, second, or I prefer.
Any discussion?
No, I'd just like to pull that out second because I'd like to make some.
Anyone else with discussion? Um, all in favor of the consent agenda with the exception of 3G.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, uh, can I get a motion on 3G, please?
I'd like to make a motion on 3G, subject to Dick Wade making sure that residency, whether it applies or not, to the appointment to the citizens, please advise or report.
I'll second that.
Any other, any discussion on that topic? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearings. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-44 approving the mayor's budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015 postponed from the February 24, 2014 meeting. Is there a motion?
Question two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests of this matter? Anyone who would like to speak against the mayor's budget? Anyone here who would like to speak in favor?
I will.
And, uh, seeing none, other than Renee, um, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I guess my only discussion is, um, to thank city staff once again for putting together an easy-to-read, um, and easier-to-understand budget for those of us who are not accustomed to financials. And secondarily, to let the public know that, in my opinion, again, city staff continues to be good stewards of your taxpayer dollars and we continue to do our best to live within our budget and look for ways to reduce and cut costs. So, I do appreciate the effort on behalf of all the city employees and I thank you.
I would like to say how very much. I believe this to be a good budget. It keeps us within our means. It, uh, it continues the trend of, this is the third budget I've had the privilege to work with up here, and, uh, it continues the trend towards less and less use of overtime and using it only when appropriate. I commend the department heads for doing this. Uh, I think the citizens of this community can be very proud, all of us looking up here at it very closely and speaking for myself, I find the mayor's budget should be approved without amendment, so I commend it highly and will support it.
I guess what I'd like to, to share with that is that every year in my own household, and that was one of the things I said when I ran for this seat, was I have to understand that this budget, just like my household budget, has to adapt. And my household budget, my health insurance went up, my car insurance went up, my gas prices went up, uh, fuel charges, pretty much everything at home went up. And I would say that that's the same situation with any city government, costs go up. So, the fact that, uh, staff and the mayor were able to, um, have a budget that did not increase the levy, knowing full well that costs did go up, um, I do commend them. I think it was a challenge and I think that they've done a wonderful job and will be in favor of this.
And, uh, I also commend the mayor for keeping the levy rates, uh, level. It, uh, it takes a, uh, a considerable amount of, of will and, uh, and hard work in order to accomplish that in an environment where a city is constrained in many ways by the state and how it raises revenue and how it spends. And so, having recognized that, uh, I intend to, to vote for the budget, but I do so with some reluctance. And my reluctance is not caused by any material problems in the budget itself, to, in the fact that, that right now, we are, uh, spending 120 million of your tax dollars based upon budget analysis and expectations as they exist here today, March 10th, 2014. Earlier, uh, and in the, in the study session and, and last week, we, we heard, uh, concerns raised about, uh, sewer utility rates and, and here expenses that we will incur because of levy maintenance. Those costs will be heavy and adjustments will need to be made. And there may well be some expectation or some requirement at some point to draw more revenue from, from the taxpayers. And, and I, I try to be as, as vigilant as possible because I recognize that the average per capita income in this city is right around $45,000. And many people are, are living on, on the margins and rely upon charities to just get them by day-to-day. Also recognize that there are many seniors on fixed incomes who just have no margin left for additional expenses. Working families are, as has been noted, confronted by, uh, decreased working hours, increased expenses, increased taxes by other layers of government, and dramatically increasing healthcare costs. And so, mindful of that, we, we have to make sure that as we explore future revenue options and spending requirements beyond this package, that we do so with great caution. And I think that, that certainly the city staff has demonstrated that level of expertise and understanding that allows us to do that. Having said that, there are always things that we can do better. And, uh, and I, I think that, uh, that in the questioning in the last couple of weeks and in the many hours spent with city staff, uh, we've seen that there are some things that, that we can do, uh, to achieve reductions in efficiencies across the city staff, that there are measures that can be taken in order to prioritize level of risks and what, and what services are most essential, so that we are able to, to plan ahead. Because any, any government which waits till a problem happens in order to solve it is already behind the, the power curve considerably. So, mindful of the, the serious challenges that this, that this city has confronted and will be required to, to confront in the, the coming months, uh, I am concerned. And we as a city are increasing spending and we have to make sure that as we seek more revenue, that we do it in a manner that causes the least amount of pain to the public. And I do thank the city and the mayor for their diligent work in this regard.
And I think that we are very blessed. We have a very good finance director. I just want to thank Art Hill. I know you've spent countless hours on this and you've pushed each department to be as lean as they can be, so, thank you Art for all your work and thanks to each of the departments along with the mayor for this budget. It is a great budget. We had some high unexpected expenses last year, as we do every year, and still have had the money to cover it. We aren't raising the levy once again, which I think is great. And I really think we have a positive year ahead of us. So, thanks to everyone that worked hard on this budget.
Raising the levy, L-E-V-Y.
Yeah.
We are raising the levy, L-E-V-E.
More on that to come later.
Um, and you took a little bit of my speech, but I privately thanked Art and the department heads for their efforts on this and wanted publicly do that. And just, and it's kind of a long explanation if you, because if it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it could be a duck, but the property taxes are 42 million, not 120. And so, it's 120 million dollar budget, of which 42 million is property taxes.
That's true.
All right, anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Uh, this is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-55 approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimate for the South First Neighborhood Rehab Phase Five Project, fiscal year 15-12. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests of this matter? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone here wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
I'd make a motion to a crib.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-56 approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimate for Lower Bennett Rehab Phase Four Project, fiscal year 15-10. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests of this matter? Anyone who would wish to speak against? Anyone here who would wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15, I'm sorry, 14-57 approving the plans, specification, form of contract, and cost estimate for the West Pierce Street Reconstruction Progr, Project, fiscal year 15-08. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there, is, are there any oral protests of this matter? Anyone wishing to speak against? The minutes of the meeting will be recorded on tape. It'll be necessary to step forward to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Yeah, that, just give it to Lynn, it's perfect.
Motion to, sorry.
Motion received and filed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Um, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
All right. Um, just to remind you guys, um, because I'm 80% deaf, I can't hear myself.
Name and address, please.
That's fine. Um, I'm speaking my capacity as executive director of Bluff Downtown. My name is Josh Barbie. The address is 500 Willow Avenue, Suite 101, Council Bluff. Um, basically, um, I have two comments, um, just two, and they both have to do with safety in regards to the proposed construction project. Um, basically, what you have in front of you is the Bluff Downtown 2014 calendar events. You'll see that in green, there are four events where we're going to be working with the city to shut down the 100 block for the street dance. Um, my concern is basically, and we had a very good meeting, uh, Mayor Walsh and the department heads, and, um, I just want to echo this and go on record, that my concern is that when the West Pierce Street reconstruction starts, that that'll have an adverse effect on the 100 block. I, I'm really hoping that, you know, the city is not going to decide, "Well, we can't shut down the 100 block because, you know, West Pierce Street is shut down." I remember when we were planning the RagBri, um, we were specifically told by several people that Pierce Street and the 100 block cannot be shut down at the same time. And so, in the meeting, when we learned about Pierce Street being shut down, that was my very first thought was, you know, how is this going to affect the calendar events with all the street dances? There's, um, approximately 3,000 to 4,000 cars on Pierce Street. The other concern I have is the traffic is already pretty heavy on West Broadway. Um, the traffic pretty much speeds on West Broadway. Um, at the farmer's market, we all witnessed the cars blowing through the median and we put out pedestrian crosswalk signs and the signs would blow over. And so, to add 3,000 to 4,000 more cars, that's another concern I have, is what can we do together with the city? We're all partners. What can we do together with the city to mitigate the potential adverse effects? Um, I understand that the rodeo bar and grill has submitted an application to shut down Second Street, um, for street dances. That's great. I wish them well, but the rodeo is not part of Bluff Downtown. The calendar events you have in front of you is our calendar events. We're a nonprofit organization. We're board-driven and we are working with many other organizations, all for the one purpose of bringing life downtown. And so, that's the other concern I have, is as the city gets more and more requests because of the stress and the workload, you know, that we're going to be asked to work with these other organizations. It's not that we don't want to, it's just that we've already got the calendar events locked in. One last comment and I'm, I'm done. While we're meeting with the mayor and the department head, we learned that the parallel parking is going to be removed. I have concerns about this. My background, I have a double masters in architecture and planning. My background in 19th century architecture, main streets. And I'm going to tell you right now, if you remove the parallel parking, you're going to create an alley. The parallel parking is a barrier that protects pedestrians from the automobiles. That is a, that is something I do not recommend. I do not recommend. Um, I mean, you already have cars speeding by, it's going to make it very, very unfriendly for pedestrians. We are working on perhaps doing a charrette for the 100 block. We've already entered discussions with the Iowa Architecture Foundation. And if this works out, this, this is going to be a very exciting chapter for the 100 block. This goes on the heel of our study we're doing with Dan Carmody, uh, making the 100 block in Arson Entertainment District. And so, by bringing this charrette, we're continuing the momentum. And I think the charrette would be a great vehicle to address the urban design standards for the 100 block. I'm just concerned that if you remove the parallel parking, if we're actionaring, and then we're going to have to figure out how to mitigate the adverse effects of that as well. Thank you for your time.
Josh, just a couple of questions. Did you have some, you want to go first?
No, go ahead. I have a couple of questions to go first.
I just didn't know, did your group have, as, I didn't know about the removal of parallel parking, so I can't speak to that, but...
I, I think the discussion is just two parking spaces in front of the new building. Just two?
Well, I, I can actually answer that if you want to, because I actually asked Grace specifically today because it was brought up. They are proposing to remove several of those parallel parking if they want outdoor 90, but we were told specifically today that will have to come forward to us at a further date, once the proposal is ready, to approve or disapprove at that time. So, just know that that has no, nothing tonight. Before that actually is approved or disapproved, we will all have a chance and you obviously would have a chance, and too.
All right. We want to work with you as partners. You know, we're all in this together, so, thank you, Melissa, Sharon, thank you. I mean, that's, that's great.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. As far as, uh, the traffic on Broadway because of the closing of Pierce, did you, did your group have any suggestions you wanted to share of, of what you, you could see happening that would help because?
Well, it's, that's an excellent question, Sharon, and I looked at the maps, you know, because of the Omni Center, it's not like we can encourage the cars to detour, you know, because the, it's going to be in stages, so, I'm not really sure how that's going to work, but because of the Omni Center, that's kind of a, that's an obstruction if we were to do any detours. We are working with the Route Six Association on a classic car show and they're telling us, uh, and we're, we're hoping it's true, they're telling us that they could probably bring 300 to 500 classic cars on the 100 block. And so, you know, we're going to be hoping to work with the city on having those cars on First Street. So, this is going to be a, a really big challenge and we want to work with you guys so we can have a successful summer. I don't know if you guys saw the Omaha Magazine, the latest issue of Omaha Magazine, they did a profile of West Broadway. Matt Johnson and I were writing the magazine. That is a huge, huge, I mean, that's big, the fact that we got in the Omaha Magazine. So, we're being relentless.
Very good. You know, I look at it and I, I guess my point would be that, you know, I'm looking at your scheduled events and it pretty much runs through the entire construction season.
Exactly.
So, you know, realizing that, that if things go the way I hope they go, this calendar every year will get bigger, not less.
Exactly.
So, it's never going to get easier to do this. So, that's why I'm hoping if, if you guys had some suggestions that you thought were going to be helpful, you know, feel free to share them with us, you know, we're looking for solutions. I don't, delaying the project's probably not going to change anything for the 100 block as far as making it easier at another time, since the programming tends to run through the entire construction season. So, shoot me some emails or the rest of the council, let us know what you think, you know?
And, and this is very exciting to see. I'm excited to hear more about these events. I did ask as well, um, because it was brought up luckily ahead of time, about closing Pierce Street and if it would impact closing Broadway, closing the 100 block. I know that was a concern and Greg Reader and Matt Cox and, uh, several others have told us that they will allow Broadway, just, well, the 100 block, to still be closed for these events this year, even with the closure of Pierce Street. So, that's hopefully reassuring.
Okay. Uh, I wanted to give you my assurance that, uh, I will continue my support of, uh, not only using the parallel parking and, uh, facing towards the sidewalk, but of closing the street. I, I think it ought to be closed for pedestrian traffic. I think, uh, there is some bureaucracy to work through, but we do have Highway Six that can be used for, it would require that the maps to be updated for that three-hour interval, but I, I don't think that bureaucratic inconvenience should, uh, preclude this sort of event and I think it ought to be every Thursday, but then, of course, I, uh, look forward to seeing your application, but that remains my position.
Well, I think, I think going forward, the, the key is going to be communication between the organization, the city, and the public, um, for any street diversion or closure. Um, as long as there's advance notice and the public is aware, um, it's going to be a, a temporary inconvenience, but there's no other way around it because construction has to happen. So, um, I think the key is going to be communication.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you to Bluff's Downtown for the work you've done, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this is a great calendar.
All right, um, anybody else wishing to speak against? Um, please give your name and address for the record.
Um, my name is Rich Triptow. I am the owner of Council Bluff's class, technically president of Matt Inc. Uh, I lived in Omaha, 1012 Douglas Street, but a former Council Bluff's native. Um, first of all, I want to really thank the mayor and, and some of the council members for meeting with Bob and myself, or, or at least calling us and talking to us. And I did write a, a rather lengthy letter that each of you received a copy of, and it was for to Greg and he had his people come and, and, and my concern is not about the, the logistics of the project. Um, uh, we know progress is going to be changed in the infrastructure. My question is, why not? We just came off less than two years ago, a major overhaul of probably a, a very dangerous intersection. Uh, it shut down the, all Madison Avenue, First Street through that area, as well as Pierce Street. And even though we had access, I'll, I'll talk on behalf of Bob a little bit on this business wise, even though our customers had access from, from Glen and Park Avenue, you know, missing out on 3,000, 4,000 vehicles a day is a daily reminder, "Hey, I'm going to go get this, or I'm going to get that." And unfortunately, just like Sharon mentioned, the busiest days, the busiest months in our business are May, June, July, and August, and, and they start slowing down in September with school starting in, in full. So, less than just two years ago, we had this major intersection there, uh, that we fixed and, and it was really unsafe. If you want to talk about unsafe and keeping cars moving through smoothly, it certainly solved the problem. Now, I did a walk today, first nice day to walk out. I walked up and down, all the way up to St. Pete's, and there's nothing wrong with the road, other than being old. Nothing at all. Nothing wrong with the sidewalks. There's a couple of potholes that need to be filled closer up to St. Peter's than toward our, our properties and our businesses, so it isn't a safety factor. Now, if you want to talk about an infrastructural improvement, absolutely. Um, you know, down the road, it's going to have to be changed. My question is, why now? I'm asking you to delay it and delay it in conjunction with maybe some other urban renewal of those properties. I used to be for 10-plus years at 14th South First Street. And I get in this, I get in the crossfire between the owner at the time and who owns it now. And so, I moved out of there just to get ahead of the curve and I moved up with, with Bob and Bob also moved up there. I've owned my business 20 years. I opened up April 18th, 1994, so, 20 years worth of, of employing people, bringing people into this town, but I moved up there and, and it cost me some businesses being off the corner. So, my, you know, my suggestion to you is, how can we tie in this whole urban renewal at one time? Because I know in two, three years, we're going to be right back where we are right now, making room for these new develops, urban development. And, and right now, like I said, the street is not, has not been claimed to be unsafe or unfit, and it isn't. There are a majority of people that get to the downtown area here, whether it be the, the, uh, the post office, whether it be, uh, the library, uh, you know, they need that corridor easier than going on Broadway or, or on Canesville, or going back through the other neighborhoods. Okay, but when you close this, we all know that consumers are just, frankly, they're lazy. They want to drive up by the front door, they want to have it easy, and, and our business is already competitive. And now, you put us at a big economic disadvantage because we're missing out on convenience which should beat everybody's, uh, you know, I mean, everybody wants it. And so, we've suffered two years ago on this. Now, you're asking us to be real neighborly to let you close this down so we can suffer again, and it does affect our sales. And I just encourage you, I guess, I, my thing is, 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 I'm not against the reconstruction, I'm against it right now. And I think that at a later date, you could put all these things together and, and with that urban renewal, that'd be maybe at one time, it'll be a big splash, but it'll give us some time to run our business a little bit better, get it, get them healthier, because like I said, it was only two years ago that you took, uh, I mean, it, it took a big chunk of business from us. The other thing that we learned, and I guess the other thing we learned was, uh, is, there's the biggest thing is about utilities. And, 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 and the engineers, and specifically Dave, mentioned that Mid-American Energy and some of those people aren't going to get to those till the end of the summer at the earliest. And, and, and all those are going to be above ground. So, if, if nothing's going to be put in the ground, why can't that, I mean, that part, I mean, is going to be less intrusive, it's going to be less intrusive. There might be some lane restrictions, but there wouldn't be any closure. Uh, I think, you know, you can still do a lot of other things and accomplish some of your other goals without having a complete closure of those two blocks there. Uh, and, and who knows what, what ghosts or demons or monsters are going to be down there on that ground because we've seen it everywhere else in town. And that's just because it's, it's an old town, we know that. So, um, some of the answers they gave us were really good, but they weren't trusted answers, and I won't say they didn't speak sincerely. They were just giving their best forecasts that they could do. Scott, Dave, they did a wonderful job, so I want you to know that they did their due diligence with, with Bob and I, and, and, and that part we're comfortable with if this goes forward. I'm hoping it doesn't go forward, at least until a later date.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I did want to, I did ask today at study session, because that was one of the things that came up, is when the other vacant building on Broadway has to be rehabbed, are they going to have to tear up West Pierce again? And I was told there was no reason it would need to be torn up again. They've already completed that section that's fine there. So, I don't think that that should be an expectation. Um, the reason it's being done, and I'm sure you, they've shared this with you, is that there is an apartment building going in. Nobody asked, nobody has asked the city to do this. This was planned and staged, understanding that once you get 30 more residents over there, the access from West Pierce, it's going to be nearly impossible to phase it where each of the businesses still has access and all those people can get home. So, the intent is to get it done before it's going to be a bigger nightmare than it's already going to be, and I know, and I do wish there was some way this could be done without impacting the businesses, but I can't see any way, I mean, each business, of course, will have access, but I know it's not ideal and I wish there was another way around it, but I'd rather do it now because I really believe it's going to be even worse for you if we have to try to stage for 30 more residents and once they start driving on that street, it's going to go bad quick. It's already not good. I drive on it every day, it's not good.
Well, one of the questions I still have for, for Scott and, and Dave were, whoever you pick, I mean, they're still going to have to stage their equipment up and down that road. Well, that's the same way with any development. They're going to want access. And what I'm talking about is, I'm, I'm asking you to delay it two, three years. I'd rather face it two, three years down collectively. I'd rather face it two, three years down collectively one last time. I'm saying, I, 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 I feel without a doubt, we'll be back here two, three years, you know, from now, asking for permission, uh, uh, lanes or at least, uh, leadway into that, we're staging for these developments, because most of those are gonna try to come off the backside of Pierce Street. You're not gonna close down Broadway, and you're not gonna close down First Street for these people. They're gonna be coming in our, on Pierce Street on, I mean, time and time again. We're gonna be back here in two, three years. And I think that, I mean, we can only shoulder so much being neighbors. And I, and, and, and I'm not only talking about myself, but all the citizens that go, those three to four thousand that go daily because they want to avoid Broadway and, and Canesville to get to the downtown, whether it be the library or, or the post office or some other business or i- i- in the downtown area. It doesn't make it very comfortable, and it certainly doesn't make it very safe.
Thank you. Anybody else speaking against? Anyone here speaking in favor?
I speak against, one other thing, sorry. I'm at one twenty-five West Pierce. Um, I guess probably my biggest concern is, we need cars. We can't, they can't carry them from the corner, they can't come in. And like Rich said, you know, people are lazy. You know, HDM has worked very well with their staging and maybe helping us bring cars in both ways. You know, they've really stepped up to the plate and, and helped us stage this. But like Rich said, people are lazy. Last time it was closed, we had access to our building, people called up and says, there's no way to get to us because the barricades are up. And they kept, the construction people kept moving the barricades to totally block the road so people could not come in, whether they were coming to us or, you know. And most people, you know, they would go to a barricade, is that really closed? They're gonna drive up and try to turn around. You know, it happens all the time. Well, you know, our concern is, you know, what do we need to do, how are we gonna guarantee that our customers can even get in, you know, and keep our flow of traffic? You know, because like I said, without, you know, we, we service thirty to, thirty to fifty cars a day. And if I lose half them cars, the people that are lazy won't go down, then I have to lay people off, and I can't, you know, we can't do anything, so, you know, that's, that's my biggest concern of, of the Pierce Street, uh, shuffle.
I understand.
You know.
And it wouldn't matter when we did it, it's gonna affect you, there's no potential it can be done without affecting your business, and it's, it's really unfortunate, but whether it's today, whether it's in three years, eventually it is gonna impact you, and I, I wish that it didn't have to.
Yeah, I don't have an alley to bring them in either.
No, I know.
Can we check into maybe some different kind of signage, or maybe an electronic sign or something that draws attention to the fact that there is a way in? I mean, I think, I talked about communication as key earlier, but I think, you know, visual communication also would be, would be helpful and, and, you know, reduce the number of people that won't, that won't go because.
We're going that way, correct?
Right, yeah, 'cause I agree, if it's not easy.
Yep, they're not gonna go.
You know, and people are lazy, right, so if we can make it easy for them, or at least very visibly easy for them, yes.
I think, I think that's a good idea, I think that would be something I would be open to as a member, to try to help mitigate some of it, because it is, it's, it's anything means for you, we fully get that. I know they are, and we asked today at study session, they are trying to make the changes that you had spoke about. To make it better, but I think if it was one of those visual signs that said, you know, Lyle's still open, or you know, some.
Open to, yeah, open to there, or open to, you know, traffic to there that they could get over, you know, that would greatly be appreciated, you know, 'cause it would help both of our businesses, you know, 'cause, again, if we don't have cars, we can't, we can't operate, we can't pay our bills.
Well, and, and I'm inclined to, you know, I'm gonna vote in favor of, of this tonight as well, because I think regardless, whenever the street is closed, it's going to be an inconvenience and it's gonna have an impact, and I'd rather get it over with and then try to assist you with ways to get the people in there.
Right, and, you know, and one other thing I'd like to, I'd like to mention, I was on the corner with Lyle's down in the corner for fifteen years. I know that all the utilities come in the backside of that building. Where are they gonna bring utilities in for this new building? Are they coming off the water and that, are they gonna come off?
They're stubbed off the new street on Broadway.
They're gonna, they're gonna come off Broadway, because, yeah, so that was the other concern, because now they're moving the water pipe under our sidewalk, so if they need water, they're gonna have to tear this road up, the new road up to get access to the new building.
We, we asked that earlier though, and I, I thought that they confirmed that they would not be ripping.
They were coming up.
They, they, we're not gonna be ripping Pierce Street up again in the future for utilities.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they will advance plan the, the placement.
Okay, okay, that was, that was my other big concern, 'cause if, if all of a sudden they got Pierce Street done, and now they build a new building, now they can hook water up and they can carry the street up again to, to go across the road.
Usually all works in.
Yeah.
We have a reason to wonder that, so, yeah.
We did clarify that in the session.
Okay, okay, okay.
And, and I guess I, I just wanted to make sure that, that based upon conversations before that, you felt that you were still gonna maintain the, the capability of, of keeping the, the business open and being able to, to employ, uh, folks and keep that service going in the long term.
If they can keep, if they do the staging as, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause, no, 'cause this is five months that, that we're talking potentially over life of that.
Yeah. Right. Correct. Correct.
So, that's, that's a pretty significant impact to any business, five months.
Right, which would probably be seven.
Because that's the way it works.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is true, yeah.
You never know till you get into it what it is.
So, I, yeah, I, I appreciate that, 'cause I'm just looking for some warm fuzzy, because, uh, 'cause a- as, as the others here, I just don't see a good alternative workaround to this. Uh, I, I reviewed the plans and specifications, uh, they're, they're doing about the best they can do, but I still recognize that there's a level of pain for it.
Right, exactly, exactly.
I think visibility is just gonna be key.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Visible access, so.
Yeah, or, or.
The mayor and the staff will look on that for you, yeah.
Yeah.
Get what's-her-name out of the back of the trailer.
Suzie Bell?
Suzie Bell.
That would be great.
I tried to get that with Lyle, and he thought it caused too much problem. I'll put rum and dog in my building.
I was so surprised to find out it was still around when I saw the picture.
He's still there.
Wow, it's in the past.
Anybody else?
Matt Johnson, uh, one, well, one, one-one, Kenmore Avenue, Council Bus, bear with me, I get a little nervous talking in front of this. I'll go real quick, um. I've been on the, on the, the Hundred Block for almost thirteen years, know most of you quite well, I don't know Al very well, I'm just meeting him. My concerns about this project are two, the parking and the timing of it. Um, the parking spots on Broadway are gonna be part of this project, and even she forwarded me Greg's email. He indicated that it is gonna be a big deal for the, the developer if they can't get these spots. We, we need to get that resolved to make sure, we can't afford losing those spots. We have a number of handicapped older people that rely on in-front parking, we have to have those spots. Um, secondly is the timing. Uh, the, the buildings across the street from me, the other three that are still standing, were purchased in almost three years ago, and I've been told repeatedly that those buildings will not even be looked at until this project's done. That was last fall when we, we, we talked about the, the new building, well, we're seven months later and we still haven't broken ground. So, does that mean this building's not gonna be done till two thousand sixteen? And we're not gonna look at those three buildings? I mean, I, I, I took pictures tonight. I mean, people need, I mean, there's nowhere else on Broadway with boarded up windows. I mean, there's boarded up windows, there's two hundred pigeons living in there. You know, I had a full patio of people eating at, at, at our place at glory days, and we have that across the street. Now, isn't there any way we could, I mean, I know we can't force anybody to, to do anything with their own property, they obviously own it, but, I mean, I think our priorities are a little bit out of line in this. I mean, are we doing all this accommodation just for this building? I mean, it kinda sounds like that.
I would tell you, and you know that, I've told you this before, it's an embarrassment to the community.
I agree.
It's an embarrassment.
When is it gonna, is there a plan?
Absolutely.
I mean, is there a plan to clean them up?
There is no plan.
Not that we've been told. Though they are, though they are a public institution, so you do have the right to ask them, and they have to tell you. I encourage you to do so.
Was it scooping snow, they didn't, they didn't scoop their snow a lot times this year, and it's just, I mean, I don't understand why we're jumping through hoops for this, especially with the parking out front. My, my last issue on the parking, and it goes, runs hand in hand, you know, I've heard Matt, Mayor Walsh make the comment, you know, we have a walking problem, not a parking problem. Well, he very well may be true, but is there a parking study coming at any point in time? I mean, I think we need one, you know, we've had a ton of, of, of new businesses going in there. I, 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 I don't think we're gaining spots with the new building. We, you know, I don't wanna get in the building, I promised myself I wouldn't, but it's based on an income-based tenant that has to pay for parking. I had a deep business in Omaha with the same situation, mixed-use building. I had to tow cars every day, because our tenants would not respect businesses' parking. So, to just say that we're gonna net add that many parking spaces, I don't think we are. You know, I think that they're gonna be in back filling up those spots, you know, I mean, then, you know, I'm not a parking guru, but I do know that when you walk down the block and there's no parking out back or out front, and there's no one in half of those businesses, I mean, what would it be like if they were busy? Then we would all be hurting. So, at some point in time, we have to do a study, whether it's the Omni Center or somewhere, but to even think about taking away more parking spots to me is just ludicrous. And along that line, I would push for, for any downtown plan being updated, so that we can work within, so we know what we're working within.
And Matt, I had said earlier, this was really the first I knew about these parking places, so that's new to me. Um, I, the thing about doing the reconstruction of West Pierce is this. I believe those apartments are going in no matter what. So, not doing it's not gonna change that, and it really is only going to make it harder for us to do it later. And I believe that the staging issue would be very, very difficult, once we add another thirty people that need to get in and out of there. That, that's the only reason to do it right now. They told us at study session, they assured us, nobody asked the city from that apartment building that's going up, nobody has asked the city to do this. When they realized it was going in, they realized it was gonna be an issue, they chose to do it now, and it makes sense, you know, it's just gonna be too hard. So, um, definitely we'll be looking into the parking. Hopefully, the rest of the parking lot will get finished this spring in the back, so that'll add some more parking. And, uh, we do need to look at a parking study, I do agree that we at least need to know what we should have in that area.
And, and this in-front parking is helpful, obviously, we don't get a vote on it tonight, it's not before us, but we know, you know, obviously now we know the concerns, and I'm sure we all will take that into account when that does come up, because that is very helpful. And that was something I was concerned about before study session, but when Greg did clarify that, that is not part, that has no impact on this Pierce Street, I think that makes a difference in this decision. It is being done, because it, it's bad enough now in convening, you two owners. It will be way worse when we also are convening thirty or more, you know, some people will have two individuals in the apartments.
Well, and we are resurfacing the, the lots that, that, that were done in two thousand eight, the middle part where it's dropped.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so it's gonna be a rough summer down there, these guys especially, and us as well, because there, there's not gonna be much parking down there at all.
Well, and, and parking's up, I mean, I don't wanna keep talking about parking, because it's not, doesn't have anything to do with the public hearing, but I, I, I do wanna say that, you know, it's always been a, a problem, and, and hopefully there'll be some relief with the lots in the back being finished. But, um, I, I agree that if we could do a parking study, that would be, that would be very, very beneficial. And thank you for your comments.
I don't have a question for you, so if no one else does, go ahead and sit down. Oh, was there someone else who wanted to speak?
Yeah.
I was, I was gonna wait till they were done to get my thoughts.
Name and address for the record, please, Rob.
Hello, Rob Gilmer, one fifty-seven West Broadway. I li- also live at one forty-one Broadway, so I'm a tenant, I live there, and I also have two businesses. My major concern is, when Pierce Street was closed before, we had a ton of traffic going down Broadway, and if you're in the used irons parking lot and you try and turn left, it's impossible, it's very, very dangerous. Um, even if you wanna turn right, it's hard. Um, we, they talk about parking and stuff like that, that's always a concern, stuff like that, but I also wanna say thank you for opening up the windows. It really, it was nice. But, um, I just, my major concern is also, will the project on Pierce Street coincide with the project that PCDC J Development's doing?
I believe they intend to get ahead of that project.
So, Pierce Street would be done first, and when that's done, then J Development and?
Well, I, I don't wanna mislead you, they, they, they wanna get the street done before the people move in, and so, they could be happening simultaneously, but I don't.
Is that, that, if they do it at the same time, they'll be devastating to our businesses and their businesses, and we need parking. Um, and if they do it at the same time, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a de- a death sentence for us, and I really don't want that. Um, there's a lot that ri- rides on our shoulders, and we wanna be successful, and if we keep getting things taken away, like access from Pierce Street, the parking lot's gone, at the same time, parking's gonna be taken up for construction, uh, people, it's gonna be very difficult, so if they happen at the same time, that's gonna be a major concern. We also have some people unloading people right in front of our restaurant, and if the traffic volume goes up considerably, that's gonna be a major issue for maybe accidents, and then also just, you know, tie-ups, so.
Well, if I may speak to the, the issue of, uh, I think, uh, i- if the concern with regard to, uh, people choosing West Broadway as a through route, and of course, the residents of the community have spent a great deal, and I'm in agreement with it, where we've channelized that is we, we've made fewer lanes as you, as you approach the curve of West Broadway, right in front of American National Bank and, uh, the old mall. And then on the other side, we took, we got rid of, it used to be two lanes each direction, and it was now one lane with a center lane and a bike path. The goal is, is to de-incentivize West Broadway, and, and I think a lot of folks, I know I, I was not aware of the fact, uh, and this makes complete sense from a planning perspective, by the way, but First Street is where Broadway becomes West Broadway and East Broadway. It's the Hundred Block of West Broadway, and so, a lot of times, I think people think the viaduct is where West Broadway starts. There is no Broadway, there's west and east and the north, as it so happens. But, you know, one of the ways of, if, on that issue, speaking to that right now, and a- as much as it may not be popular, is the only reason to take that route is a shortcut, and vigorous enforcement of the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit would, I think, de-incentivize people who were not trying to go there to frequent the businesses, which is indeed what we've been trying to do with our whole parking scheme, or our whole planning scheme. And maybe that's not the solution, but I don't think we ought to just, if this project goes forward, I don't think we ought to just wash our hands of it and say, you deal with it. I think if we create it, we have to find, we have to work with you, you have to work with us, of course, to find a solution, and, because compromise is a two-way street, no, no pun intended.
And one decision I'm gonna make tonight, if you can divert a lot of the traffic at Canesville and Broadway right after the viaduct, that would probably save a lot of headaches.
Maybe signage there.
Or something like that, yeah, so.
I, I won't pretend to truly understand the planning and safety issues, but I think we ought to look into everything we can if it goes forward, yes.
I think, uh, my concern with that is we'll have some businesses that will say that they're losing business, 'cause people think they can't go that way, so. But I think we do need to work with the businesses as best we can as a city, but I haven't seen the, uh, construction, um, calendar for this building, I'm not privy to that, and I think we probably have very little control over what they do, we can only control what we do. And I do understand what you're saying, but I really believe it's only gonna make it a lot worse for everybody if we wait to do this after that's up. So, um, certainly, when you have ideas that you think would work, email us, we'd be happy to talk to, you know, the mayor department heads to see what things can and can't work, um, but, yeah, don't, don't hold back, I wanna hear ideas.
And thank you for all you're doing, thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn, name and address for the.
Glenn Teason, one hundred Briar Ridge Drive. I have, I guess, a personal interest in how things go on Broadway, so from the viewpoint of parking, I'm not gonna belabor the point, it's terrible, so we need to really work on that, and, and having something on paper, how you're gonna go about doing it, would really be helpful to us all down there, at least we can have a vision to hang our hat on. The other thing is that kinda concerns me, is that we were told when Broadway was reconstructed, that it was gonna be X amount of days, and those days went into weeks and months. And now I hear five months to get Pierce Street done. And now I hear five months to get Pier Street done. Is that gonna turn into, or is there a big penalty clause if it doesn't get done in five months?
All, all our contracts now include liquidated damages, and, and that particular contractor is no longer a contractor with the city. But I hear it's a say it was.
Disaster. I mean, the businesses just took a terrible hit. When you lose eighty to ninety percent of your clientele and your money, you can't stand business very long, and we're here to support the businesses of downtown.
And, and I, I did see those clauses when I reviewed the, the package on Saturday. So, so there is a penalty clause.
Glenn, I would, you know, I think everybody sitting up here would love to be able to tell you that that five months is solid. But we all know, and it was brought up earlier, boy, once you start digging in, you don't know what lies beneath. But, you know, if there was anything we could do to assure you that it would be done in that five months, we absolutely would. We want nothing more than to get it done and get out of there and get businesses back to business.
And, and I guess, I guess that brings up another point then, Rich and talked a little bit about this. And this is the point of what happens if, two years down the road, when you tear up the other, other buildings that are boarded up? What happens if you find a disaster there, you know? So we're always gonna be looking for disasters and excuses, but we have to draw a line and get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, name and address for the record, please.
John Johnson, one hundred Eagle and Circle. First of all, I wanna say that I think that probably everything is being done here, is being done with the best intents. But I, I think there's some misconceptions, and I think some things have been, I've listened to what's going on, I know the parkings are concerned. Why, why do we have to do Pier Street now? Is there a reason? Is it because of this new building?
Yeah, I think they said because.
Is that, is that, is the building a done deal?
The park, well.
Well. First of all, is the building?
It is a good question, we don't know, they, they were supposed to get started in October.
Are we doing all these for the, for the building?
Not, not for the building, but for staging purposes in that the parking to the new building will come off Pier Street. And there are thirty-two residents there that potentially could park there. And I say that in deference to what Matt says, that we know that they probably park in the street in a lot of cases. But, but potentially thirty-two residents could park there, they wanna get it done before they have to. If you've got a staging problem for two businesses, they'd have a real staging problem for thirty-two residents.
And the development's being done by J Development and PCDC, am I wrong in that, what is that, is that? I see a guy sitting here who's been here for twenty years, he's gonna have an issue. Rich Triptow's gonna have an issue with this, it's gonna hurt his business, it's gonna cause him a real serious problem. Bob, same situation, he's gonna have a real issue. Bob, they've paid taxes, now, City Council Bluffs, the people are gonna pay taxes on this project to get it done. That's where the money's gonna come from, I'm assuming. I've heard that the reason that we're doing this, and there's such a big rush on doing this building, because there's a two-point-four million dollar community block grant that, that we wanna use. Maybe that's not the best thing for us, maybe we need to think about this a little bit. I don't see any problem with delaying this. Two years ago, these guys suffered, I, I know what my son went through. I know what it was like for him to try to keep his business open when the street was closed. I watched him suffer through it. I think this is wrong, I mean, I, I really feel this way. I think this is a good project, but I don't think this is the time for it. I think it's the right project, wrong time, maybe wrong place. This morning, I'm reading, the other thing that I have a serious issue with, with this building is it's low-rent housing. A portion of it, not all of it, I understand that there's a portion, there's also some moderate, I see you smiling at me.
Well, it's just a misconception because the rents are gonna be the same for everybody in the building, there's going to be income guidelines. So, and it's not low rent, I mean, you don't consider eight hundred dollars a month low rent, that's just not low rent. So that is, I just don't wanna perpetuate it. Some of them won't, yeah, I think to some degree for some of those units, it would be market rate.
Okay.
It's supposed to be similar to the, to the building on the, in, from the old Kern Gym.
Yeah.
There's an article this morning in the Omaha World Herald that says, "Complex Could Bring Le- Leavenworth Neighborhood Back to Life." That's a struggling neighborhood, and I re- I wanna read just one, one sentence in here. "The new apartments would be across the street from such and such, one of several Park Avenue apartments that are condemned and have been rehabilitated into market-rate rentals." We want, they're, they wanna take a struggling neighborhood, they wanna make it, they wanna do market rate. We wanna take the thriving, most thriving area of Council Bluffs, there isn't a business, there isn't a business community or a re- that's any better. There's a waiting list for apartments in, in the used iron, I understand. What are we doing? I, I, I don't get it. What are we, this is, this, we don't have to accept this in Council Bluffs any longer. I, one of the things, I've lived here sixty, I'm sixty-seven, I've lived here sixty years of my life, I'm proud of this town, I love it, I wouldn't have been here. We don't have to accept what someone wants us to take, we can do what we want to do. And maybe two-point-four million dollars isn't what we need for this project. Maybe we just need to do a market-rate project and give some consideration to a couple of guys here who've busted their butts and done what's right for the city. Paid their taxes, employed people, and done things the right way. I'm gonna close by saying that you can be part of two things here, you can be part of what Council Bluffs used to be. Or you can be, you guys can make it what we want it to be, and we all want the same thing. These guys do, I do, we want it to be something special. The one hundred block is something special. All you have to do, I had a developer in the other day from Des Moines, and he said, "This is a special block, what are those three old crappy buildings doing there?" That are boarded up. By the way, I drove Broadway three times today, it's, they're the only boarded-up buildings on Broadway. And I think the city can do something about it, personally. Though, before we start another project, we need to do something with what we've got. And I've probably said enough.
Well, and as far as whether the city can do something about it, we could certainly ask the Health Department and the Building Department to make sure that it meets code. But we can't force somebody to develop it, i- if it meets.
You can't force them to develop, but you can have it to a certain standard.
Yes, you, we can have it meet code, we can have it meet the Health Department code requirements. That is something the city can do, but the city can't force them to make it look pretty or to make it be developed. It's something we wish that they would choose to do sooner than later. But there, there's not as much that the city can do as I think some people think.
I always thought a bank belonged there.
And it's as frustrating to us as it, as it probably is to, to you guys.
I don't think, you know, sit, I drink beer there every night.
But I buy it a lot.
They, they are a public charity, sir, and so they, you have every right to petition them and to approach them. And if you disagree with the way they're running, they are required to listen to you, or you can, you can ask, you can speak to the IRS with regard to their taxes and statistics.
Do you wanna state who the owner is, we, because nobody's actually mentioned them, we've just.
Sure, they, I believe it's owned by the Potlottomi County Development Corporation. And, you know, the, if, if you have a concern with it, they are a, they, they are a 501(c)(3), which is lawyer speak for a public charity. And so they, they have reporting requirements to the public and have to disclose things and have to answer your questions. If you have them, I encourage you to ask them, and I, I've got to believe they'd answer them, I'm sure they would.
Leeann, name and address for the record.
Leeann Hughes, fourteen twenty North Twenty-first Street, Council Bluffs. I don't have a business in the one hundred block, but I spend a lot of time down there, and I'm a little concerned about some of the businesses. And I do business at the Glass Shop and Lyle's Tires. And I guess my concern is, is that this is really close to the construction that we just finished. And we just got done hurting their businesses. And as a small business owner who has struggled and is doing well here, I just, I feel for them. And I, I, I tend to think that there could be a time delay for them. And I just, if PCDC is gonna build this building and we wanna, and we wanna help them, let's do it down the road when they actually decide they wanna do something with those other three buildings. And I'm with them, I think that, I know with the truck stop project, you guys had a lot of clauses in there, you guys have to do this, if we let you do this, so on and so forth. I think if you guys are gonna go forward with this building, that there is something the city can do and say, hey, you guys wanna build a new building, how about you do something with the other ones? And we are, I spend a lot of time, and I'm a smoker, I'm gonna tell you that right now, I go outside a Barley's and I have a cigarette. And I hear a lot of talk about those three buildings over there, and it is embarrassing. I love Council Bluffs, I've told many of you already, my husband has wanted to move away from here for a long time. And I tell him, I'm, I'm planted here, and I love it here, I want to grow my business here. But I also want to help beautify this city. And I do, I'm on a lot of the committees trying to, trying to do these kind of things. And I would just like to see you guys, maybe, maybe there's a clause or something we can put in there for them to do something with those buildings, if they're gonna be allowed to do the other one.
Leeann, I do wanna clarify for you that legally, you know, when you talked about the truck stop, the reason that we were able to work something out with them is that they were asking for us to vacate some property for them.
Okay.
But as a city, you know, they own the property, we can't deny their building permits because we don't like a different property they own. That, that is just not even gonna be a legal thing that we can do.
Okay.
You know, we encouraged them to do something with it, I've encouraged them to put a scrim over it until they can do something with it. But, and, and like I say, if it's not, if it's in violation of code in some way, I would ask that the city look into that. But we can't deny somebody's building permit because we don't like another piece of property they own, that's just not even a reasonable.
Is it up to code when they have build, when they have boards on the windows and all the pigeons and all the stuff that's going on over there?
Is there a time limit on that? I, I, I've wondered that, I honestly don't know.
I see Nate out there trying to pull weeds and, and trim trees and, you know, and, and do all this stuff on that block. And I see all these other business owners who have put a lot of money, try to make that area wonderful. And I just wanted to share my concerns about that.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Trent?
Trent Teason, one oh five Golden Circle Drive. I, along with these guys, I do have a business on the hundred block. And with shutting down Pier Street, I work every day shift down on the block. And I see ninety percent of the cars going by between first and second, well over twenty-five miles an hour. I think it's impossible for pedestrians to cross the street because people go too fast. People do UEs around the medians that we so graciously were gifted, that's supposed to slow down the traffic. So from a safety standpoint, it's not safe, that block is not safe at all. And I see accidents happen right outside of Rob's place because people are pulling out and they can't see them. The issue is the speed on the block. And if they're gonna remove parking spaces, yet again, for, to technically slow down traffic, I don't think that's gonna work. I think the only way that we're gonna get the traffic down there to slow down, especially during this Pier Street, is by putting a four-way stop. Because people from one block to one block, it's gonna be hard to get up to twenty-five miles per hour. It will slow people down, so they pay attention, but if we're gonna add four thousand more cars, we need to do something to slow down the traffic.
Trent, thanks for coming and actually coming with an idea of something that might help, really appreciate it.
Quickly, you, you're the only good one, but you were brief.
Rob Gilmer, one fifty-seven West Broadway. One thing that hasn't been mentioned, the utility poles and wires, they're moving across the street. The reason why they're moving them across the street is because OSHA would not allow the project to continue. So there is a total correlation between the project with PCDC J Development and the closing of Pier Street. And no one has mentioned that, but that is the elephant in the room. And it needs to be mentioned because the only reason why they're doing it now is because PCDC J Development need those moved across the street before the project can start.
That's true.
It is true, but be clear, the developers paying for the cost of moving all of those power lines. So I just want everybody to know, they're not paying for that, they have to split the cost for that.
We are paying for the street, or the taxpayer, actually, general obligation.
Taxpayers should pay for that, but I don't want them to think they're paying for.
I just wanted to mention.
You can ask for anything.
Can I say something? Name and address for the record, please.
One forty-one West Broadway, I better step back. I'm a current replant to Council Bluffs, I grew up in Omaha, I've spent a lot of time in Council Bluffs. At the, like Manoa and the Council Bluffs drive-in, Surf, so I've been in the city for quite a while. And always thought it was such a wonderful place to live. It's a beautiful city, and it, they take care of their people over here. And the city has coaxed us to come over here, thankfully, because we can get married in Iowa, Rob and I can be married in Iowa. And that's the only reason we came over here, was so that we could get married. We brought our business with us and have, have tried to help the city grow in the ways that it should grow. But I see a lot of problems here with the city, with PCDC, because number one, they brought us over here. And then all of a sudden, they wanna put a building in our parking lot. And so all the people that come to our restaurant aren't necessarily from Omaha or from Council Bluffs, they're from all over the world. People come from all over to come to Council Bluffs, to go to our restaurant. I have countlessly times asked PCDC to look at plans for that area, for those two new buildings, for those two buildings existing, to put other restaurants in there, because it is an entertainment part of town. And that, those, those things should be flourished. But I don't really understand why none of those were taken to their board, other than Amy Recker, who was running that, that board, hasn't taken any of these decisions to there, to them. So they are blind, they're being blindly led by Amy and that group to put this building in. When the city council itself in two thousand eight suspended parking for that area, for, for the hundred block, to do construction, they never put that back into place. So there is, has been parking studies done, we do know how much parking that each business needs. Our business has a hundred twenty-five seats, we're supposed to have at least forty, forty, uh, parking spaces for our business. And that's not gonna happen with this building. So I, number one, I'm against the building, and number two, I'm against the city spending money to resurface the street for, and whether they're paying for the electrical lines to be moved or not, doesn't make any sense to me. Because we also have a problem with the street itself being, closing it off for, for street dances and stuff like that, when that spot is also a perfect spot for a city park or a city parking lot that the farmer's market could go on, that the street dances could be done on, two levels. It doesn't even have to have a parking ramp on the inside, which would cut the cost of all that stuff. But I can't even get the board to listen to me because Ms. Recker gets rid of all that stuff, she doesn't take it to her board. I don't know what to do anymore. You know, we stake a lot of things on our business here in Council Bluffs. And again, we were lucky enough to have the Smithsonian come to our restaurant, to Council Bluffs, because of the beautiful artwork that is already here, that has been bombasted by half the city, but it's beautiful artwork, and it brings people to our city. Our city, look at me calling this, our city. You know, I feel like I'm a part of this town because there's so many beautiful people on that block that I deal with on a daily basis. Here's a situation where it's gotten away from all of us, our city block has gotten away from all of us because of one organization that refuses to do anything with the current buildings that they own and the property that they, that they're supposed to be working with, the city, to promote this area, to make that an entertainment center. But again, I can't do anything if Amy Recker doesn't bring it to the board.
You know, I know a lot of members on that board though, and they are aware, and they've actually had conversations with you also, the board is aware.
You know, I've been trying to get them to do, you know.
Some of the board members, they, they are helping make that decision, it isn't just their director. I know people on the board, I've had these conversations with them, they're aware, it's not being kept from them.
Only because I've, I've sat, set them down and, and called meetings with them, with only. with only certain people on that board. And that brings me back to the thing that I said initially. The restaurants are a dime a dozen anywhere else. But you have a very nice thing here. You've got food, people coming from all over the world. We even were quoted in New York Times. So, they wanna come here. And I don't think this kind of a building is going to help this area at all. And you can stop at all, right here and now, by not doing what you're going to do for that building.
But then you have to look at down the road. What if this was a building you wanted? You know, if this was a building you wanted and we refused to pave the road because somebody else didn't want that building, it can't, you know, this is about what the city needs to do to maintain our infrastructure. It isn't about that building. And I know it is for you guys, but for Public Works, it's, when can we repave this road? When it's not gonna be having even more traffic than it has now? We can say no. We can shut it down. But that road has to be paved someday. And it's gonna affect those businesses. There's never gonna be a time, ever, gonna be a time that it won't.
Of course, it won't. It will always affect business. But I'm just telling you that none of this stuff has to be done if you don't do what you're going to do today. Which I know all of you are gonna vote for this. I just wanna be on record, letting you know that this was a wrong idea to put that building in there to begin with. It's not something that's good for Council Bluffs or the Hundred Block or the entertainment area that you wanna move, wanna have there. And it's only going to stifle the businesses that are already there.
Well, I just want everybody in the audience to know that a vote in favor of paving this road is not a vote in favor of that building. There really are, I understand what you're saying. We could undermine their project by refusing to do the road. But that's not what's on our agenda. That's, what's on our agenda is, do we pave the road today? Or do we pave the road in three years? Logically, if we pave it today, we can stage it in a way that'll affect the fewest people. But if we're talking about the building and we're hearing a lot about that tonight, I understand the concerns, but that isn't what we're voting on tonight. And I, I'm always very transparent about what I do. And I'm never gonna undermine anybody, any developer, by voting on something and backdooring them. I don't do that. You know, if this is about the building, then we'll have those discussions about the building, you know, what the city's role can even be. But I want, I will not backdoor developer, ever, by finding something over here that has nothing to do with that building, per se, and shutting them down by doing that. That's just not the way I'm gonna do it.
That should've been done by the due diligence, by knowing what OSHA had coming at 'em. And this will put it back where it belongs. I think a parking study, all this money that you're spending on road development, that doesn't really have to be done. Now, in three years, yeah, I could conceivably see that happening. But now, you need a parking study for all the businesses that are now paying taxes in that part of town. That seems to be where the money should be spent, not on resurfacing a road simply for another building to be put in. And again...
I think they can move those power poles without us resurfacing the road. So, the thing about it is, is we can hedge our bets, and we could vote against it tonight. Because Greg said, we don't have to pave that road. You know, we can put the money somewhere else. But how does it look to somebody moving in to, I think, for me, eight hundred dollars a month for a small apartment's kinda high, to have a road like that? I get that. But the whole thing about it is, they can still move those power poles across the street. They will still build it. And then, everybody's gonna be back in this room, when we've got thirty-two residents and all the businesses and all the traffic being funneled onto Broadway. Because that's thirty-two more cars that's gonna be funneled onto Broadway, more than likely. And you guys are all gonna be really mad that it's a bigger mess. And that's all I'm looking at with this. I can't take into account that people don't like nor want that building, nor do they agree with the amount of rents being charged. That's just not what's on our agenda for tonight. It's just not.
And I guess I wanna concur with what Councilman White is saying because, you know, we are voting, um, yea or nay on the West Pierce reconstruction project. All of you that have come here tonight with your comments, your concerns, we hear you. We agree with you. Maybe not entirely, but there are valid concerns out there. But before us is a resolution on West Pierce. And I believe that Mayor Walsh and the city staff are going to do what they can to make, um, the entry into Pierce Street as visible as possible to address the concerns of the business owners, so that people can get there. And as far as the building that is coming into the Hundred Block, the boarded-up buildings, the parking, those are other issues that are very important issues. But unfortunately, they're not part of the vote tonight. So, it's my hope, it's my hope that the city will come up with some satisfactory, visible resolution, solution, so that your customers can find you and get there. Because I totally agree. It is, it's gotta be done at some point, and it's going to be the lesser of a bigger evil, doing it later when there's more people to contend with. So, I think the key is going to be getting the people to your businesses so that you avoid a severe dip in your revenue. Nobody wants that, but, I mean, we've gotta reconstruct the street. So, that's kind of where I stand.
Thanks, Renee. All right. Is that all speaking against? Now, if you, those who wanna line up and speak in favor. Anyone speaking in favor? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion to move the resolution forward.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I, to avoid being repetitive, which I know I'm not always good at, but I waited till the end. The building isn't in front of us tonight. I think that point's very well clear. I think there is a record of that, the council approving that four to one, and that's a prior vote. The matter before us today is the road. It's, in my mind, it's separate in the sense of, does this project rise or fall on its merits? And, you know, it's difficult for me to say that it is needed now when staff has indicated that it's not needed from a safety point of view. And I went back and double-checked, you know, we have a rolling capital improvement plan that we call CIP in the, I guess, bureaucracy speak. This has never been in it. It's not, it's not perceived as, and that's the plan that we, as a city, over several years and across different administrations and different people in these chairs, try to be consistent. And it's not there. And I wanna be, I wanna hasten to add that I'm not in the least suggesting that there's been anything untoward by staff. Quite the contrary. I accept fully and believe that this was advanced because they thought it was good from a practical point of view. And I respect that opinion, and there's quite a bit to be said for it. But I think most people in this town are familiar with West or East Pierce. There's another one of those. There isn't a Pierce Street. There's a West and an East, um, on either side of First Street. But, um, is that the area that needs the help the most? I think we'd all agree, the street itself could certainly use a repaving. But I don't, I'm not convinced this is the spot that needs it right now. The, those two buildings, I think it's irrelevant in the sense, I understand that when they build the new building and whenever they rehab the other buildings or not, they won't have to tear up the street to do that. So, I think it comes down to priorities. And, well, I drove that streets a couple times this weekend, just to see. And the worst spots of that street, to me, are unquestionably in front of Jenny Edmondson. Um, and it seems to me that's a higher priority, to have those streets fixed first. And the only way that I can say that I, I think it's a matter of perception. Again, I don't think it's, in this case, reality, that there's been favoritism. But I'm concerned about the perception, and I'm quite convinced we wouldn't do this for the little guy. And so, I can't vote for the big guy either. I just, I don't think it makes sense. I'm gonna vote no.
And we did do it for all health. I mean, we, this isn't the first time something like this has been done. The clinic down there, that road was repaved when they went in because of the added traffic, and the people were gonna have to drive on a really bad road. And that wasn't on the SIP either. And I just don't, that's the other thing that makes people think there's something wrong with what we're doing. That the SIP is flexible, and we have to change it based on what's going on in our community.
Oh, I don't, I don't disagree. The only thing I'd say is, the all health, even though we've changed it from the Council Bluffs Health Center, or, I'm sorry, that might not be the exact former title. It's a public building. It's not a private business, and it's certainly not a small one. I'm just concerned of the perception. I don't, I, so to me, it's a matter of principle. If it's not needed, and it's merely convenient for a large entity that has arguably not done anything to endure itself, to deserve it, and we wouldn't do it for anybody else, and it's not the top need on that street, I have a hard time, it's a perception issue. I just can't. I respect the other view. I understand the practical side of it. I completely get, I know we all hold these in good faith. I'm just telling you how I see it.
When I started review on this item, I was initially concerned mostly with the impact that it was gonna have on the two businesses on West Pierce. And I was not a part of the discussion on the project on West Broadway. Having heard what I heard tonight, it has impacted me and caused me to rethink because it's, uh, when I started to consider that we would be looking at construction of that project, I'm sorry, on Broadway, taking place at the same time that we are doing rebuilding of the street on Pierce, that is a substantial impact to that block and a potentially devastating one. Not just to the businesses, obviously, on Pierce, but, um, also in terms of the ability, the folks on Broadway, to keep operating for that period of time under those circumstances. Uh, given the difficulties that would be confronted by delaying this project, and Councilwoman White has outlined those quite well, I feel that the, uh, that the greater loss, in effect, comes to that, to that block down there on West Broadway and Pierce. And having heard all the citizen inputs tonight, I've changed my mind. I intend to vote no.
And I'll say a few things. I've been torn on this all along. I think it's needed eventually. I think it's smart to do it now before we do add the thirty-two additional residents. But I will say, after hearing everybody speak tonight, a few things, and we briefly touched on this, but a few things that did kind of concern me is the fact that we would have major construction going on for the building and for the road at the same time. And seeing, you know, what Joshua brought forward to us, and I know what Matt and everybody has worked so hard. We're finally gaining momentum this year. I feel like the past few years, that block has really gained momentum. As much as I would like to do this now, because I think it's convenient for the city to do now, I don't wanna kill that momentum already in a year when we just aren't quite there yet. I think if we had several more years to be more established, I would be more comfortable with doing this. And I know they're saying we can still close the Hundred Block. I feel comfortable we could. But I do think traffic is gonna be an issue. And I think having, which you pointed out, and I didn't think about having construction going on at the same time as this road, is maybe something concerning. I think, right now, I don't think it's a good idea either.
I think that's a good point that didn't get brought up this afternoon. Do we, does anyone know when the construction is going to commence on that, on that development?
I believe it's probably late summer.
The last I heard was that, you know, originally, of course, they needed to break ground. I believe October 1st, and they intended September 23rd. And I, I have no opinion as to why it's delayed, because I honestly don't know. But I know, I did ask about the status of the project for Ms. Recker, and she had said they'd gotten a thirty-day extension because there was some paperwork issues, which is not uncommon in fairness to them, complete fairness to them. But I don't know the status right now, and I don't mean to imply that there's something wrong. I just, I know I haven't gotten an update since November, and it'd be sure nice to know.
So, they may not even be starting on that building until October? After this is concluded, or, we don't know?
We may or we may not.
We don't know.
Yeah.
Can we delay this?
We can.
Is there any way to delay this for two weeks?
I think we should.
Because I would hate to also approve this, do this development right now, and then not have the building, then we've done it right now for no...
Well, that's a huge question that didn't come up this afternoon, and I think we need to get the answer to that. Do we, Dick, do we postpone the public hearing?
I think you wanna keep the public hearing open, so yes.
Okay.
We'll continue the public hearing.
So, do I withdraw my motion? How do we do that?
Just, at this point, just a motion to continue the public hearing would take precedence over your motion.
Okay, so I would like to make that motion that we continue for two weeks so that we can gather the information needed.
Yeah, and I would like to second it, because I do think that's an issue that wasn't discussed.
I think based on, again, your practical arguments, which I grant you has considerable merit. I think knowing that is very sensible, so I'd agree.
So, that means that you're all gonna be back here in two weeks?
Oh, yeah, we need to vote.
And we'll bring this up again.
I've never been in a heart of any kind of situation like this. And it makes my heart feel very full. But because I was able to talk to you and you understand what we're all going through, it makes me feel like I wanna be part of politics.
That was not our intention.
Renee, as I sat next to a guy who worked at the bank, and somebody leaned into him and said, "I'll have your job." And he looked back and said, "You don't want it." He, you know, and I don't have a vote, but I do have a dog in the fight. And I just want people to understand, if we wait three years, those thirty-two residents will be parking in the Hundred Block for the entire summer. And so, the staging does make some sense to me. But we can postpone it. You withdrawing your motion? You wanna make a...
I think I cha, Dick, what did I do? Did I change my motion? Okay, yes.
Then we can get some more, yeah. Then it gives us a little more time.
Any other discussion on postponing?
No, other than Matt, if you would...
Or extending, no?
If you would, if you can, have some contact with...
I'll get information to you tomorrow.
That'd be great.
That'd be really...
Find out what their start dates are, what their completion dates are scheduled for.
Can we ask about the boarded-up buildings while you're at it?
I've been asking for three years. I don't think I'll get an answer to that one. But I think I can get an answer to the second one.
All right.
It does appear to be some of it open. I'm certainly no expert, and I have been trying to peek through the windows. But when you walk, when you walk on the sidewalk, it does look slightly open. So, there may be some health concerns there.
Well, hopefully, the Don Durk's department will take a peek.
Yeah, well, I'm quite certain they will.
Okay. Um, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Both saying aye. Madam Clerk?
Hornson, first reading, ordinance sixty-two zero-two, amending chapter one point seven zero. Board of Library Trustees by amending section one point seven zero point zero four zero. Members, Terms of Office.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I, I, apparently, this is not as exciting. I have to take, I'll admit, having probably an unpopular view, I'm not the biggest fan of term limits. I think that's our responsibility, the mayor, to point and the council to accept. But as it comes from a recommendation from the board itself with cause, I'm gonna override, in my own mind, any objection I might have. And I'll vote for it.
You know, I agree with you, Nate, that the board is appointed, as many commissions in the city, appointed by the mayor. And, um, but because they did request this, I'm gonna vote yes as well. But I understand your point, and maybe that's something that the mayor will look at as he's appointing future commission members.
Well, just for background, um, this was voted on by the library board. Bill Wilson, God bless him, served on the library board for forty-four years, until he got remarried and moved to Omaha. It, um, Nancy Cozire will be retiring from the library board after thirty-three years. And Warren Weber, who I believe has been there twenty-five or twenty-eight years, said, you know, "I'm on this board for twenty-eight years, and I had vital ideas in the first five or six years, and I've been sitting here for twenty-three years with no new ideas." And he just says, you know, that the library's grown. There's a younger generation who sees it differently than he does. And he's kind of was the one that studied this for the library board. And he said he just thought it was time to have term limits, to let new ideas filter in. It, and I'm not slamming those people that have been there, but it's kind of a retirement social event for people that have been on there for forty-four years. And we need new, fresh ideas.
Well, and speaking to that, with the folks in the audience and those listening at home, if you have an interest in any of the boards and commissions, home, if you have an interest in any of the boards and commissions, contact the mayor's office and volunteer your services. I think we're always welcome and looking for people to come forward.
We have terms that are ending, we have terms we're still looking to replace, and so please do. There are several boards and commissions.
They're listed on the website, right? On the city's website, so you can go and have a look and see which one trips your trigger and let us know you're interested. I mean, not us, I mean the mayor.
Or you can go through your council.
That's true, that's true.
Particularly, I would particularly encourage younger and more women, and particularly young women, to join, to get a bit more diversity, obviously qualified for the boards and willing to serve would be fantastic.
It is state law that we try to create equal diversity on the boards, not only gender but ethnic backgrounds, so.
I noted that eight of the nine appointments made at this meeting involved reappointments as opposed to bringing in new folks into the boards. And I was taken by not only your arguments, but also that the way that the package was drafted up to articulate the rationale for why this was good for boards and commissions, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. The ability to bring in new perspective and new thoughts is going to be limited if we don't maybe open up some of those slots from time to time. And that's why I am a thought, I am a fan of term limits, even in my own, the outcome is good news to many. And if you want rationale, I point to Congress and I rest my case.
Well, the only thing I will add on this point is that, you know, those members who are still active, excited about what they're doing and contributing, you know, there's no reason they need to step aside. But I do encourage new people, additional people, to come forward, just don't push the old people out.
Well, literally.
I'm old, I can say that.
Any other discussion?
Better not.
Any other discussion?
No, I'm done, I'm done.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Ordinance on second reading, ordinance 6201, amending chapter 1.32, purchasing by amending sections 1.32.010 through 1.32.090.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want folks to know that, you know, for example, tonight we approved the annual budget and it has been traditional practice for us to approve everything bought under it, all the way down to cars and trucks. That sort of level of oversight over the smaller things takes us away from the bigger things and that's why there's an executive branch and we're not it, so this makes complete sense.
When we were looking at this matter last week, we asked a lot of questions and I had a lot of notes and a lot of questions because I was initially a little skeptical of the idea and I wanted to know more. Having had the questions answered, I think that there's a good faith effort here among the city staff and particularly the purchasing folks to help streamline the process and move things along in a manner that still maintains some fiscal discipline. So I welcome the staff's efforts and I'll support the ordinance.
And continuing the shout out of good city employees, Kim Van Nordstrom did a lot of work on this and she's in charge of purchasing for the city and has great ideas and you'll be hearing a lot more from Kim in the coming months, so, because she's got a whole bunch of ideas, so we'll work through them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Motion to waive, third.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolutions, Resolution 14-58, authorizing the acquisition of property on Fourth Avenue and South 12th Street as part of the Mid-City Corridor Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-59, authorizing a joint application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority by the City of Council Bluffs and Gavilon Ingredients LLC for benefits under the High Quality Jobs Program, including local property tax abatement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-60, accepting the bid of Erickson Construction Company Incorporated for the WPCP Primary Clarifier Rehab Project.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-61, amending the schedule of fees of chapter 2.08 by establishing fees for the use of Tom Hanafin Rivers Edge Park.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say, I got a couple of questions from folks. This isn't a fee to use the park, you know, it's a public park during the day. This is when people wanna have a private, let's say, a birthday party or company party in part of the park. And so this will help the taxpayer and the residents pay for the park when people wanna use part of it for an event, reserve part of it. But by no means is it being reserved all the time and it, just going down there to walk to the park, you're not going to get charged. And so I just wanted to make that clear, there was some confusion and understandably so.
Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-62, authorizing the mayor's city clerk to execute an agreement with J.E. Yolken Consulting Group Incorporated for Engineering and Program Management Services in connection with the certification of the federal levy system. Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify, there was a discussion here in the study section. It was asked whether or not there was a requirement to put this out to bid as this constitutes a professional service and the response from the city attorney was that, no, there was not a requirement under state law that we do that. And I think that's an important matter to clarify for the record.
And if I may, the other piece from a non-legal perspective, from a tangible perspective as well, these are, this is the firm that has been working with us at various stages of this whole process, so we wouldn't have to bring them up to speed, it saves time and money. So I think it also makes practical sense.
Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-63, authorizing the mayor to execute an order accepting the acknowledgment settlement agreement from Bucks Inc., DBA Bucks Express, number 17.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-64, authorizing the mayor to execute an order accepting the acknowledgment settlement agreement from Filling Station Inc., DBA The Filling Station.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations, 8A through C.
Motion to approve, all inclusive.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk, any requests from citizens to be heard?
Unreceived.
Anyone in the audience who'd like to?
I'm Claudia Vergamini, I live at 113 Bonham Circle. We submitted a claim to the city for reimbursement and restoration due to raw sewage flooding in our basement. You have all of those papers. Know that we live on a hill and we do not have flood insurance. Know that we live in a newer subdivision. Know that we explicitly followed Dick Wade's and Don Dirks' advice to hire a company to have it cleaned up and torn out. Our carpet, the pad, the tach strip, the drywall, the trim boards are all gone from our basement. Know that when this meeting is over and you all go home to your TVs and your lazy boys, our lazy boys are in the garage because our family room is gone. I have some questions for you. When Dan Jackson and Mark Wilkie came on our street Friday, February 7th, they cleaned out the sewer and they said that there were large handfuls of wet wipes clogging the sewer in two different places, one in the sewer outside of our house and also at the second sewer at the bottom of the hill. The report that we received is written by Dee Christensen, and I want to be completely respectful here, the report does not say anything about wet wipes. So why is there a different story here? Another question I have. In the report, it appears that the last time the manholes were checked was August and June of 2007. If the city has not cleaned or checked the sewer in seven years on my street, does that make a case for negligence and liability? Another question I have. This afternoon, Mr. Wade indicated that our claim was dismissed and that our next stop was district court. The letter that we received states that this is still under investigation. So I'm really confused. Is this matter under investigation or is this disaster over in your mind? In conclusion, while we are living in a house that's torn up and our family room is messed up and our daily lives are in upheaval, sewage flooded our basement, we followed directions. We submitted a claim. We went to a lot of work to provide all of the details and account that you received. Seems to me that the city has shown little interest in determining what's happened to us and if they are at fault or not. This catastrophe makes me not proud of our city and not have faith in our system. I invite you to come to my home, I invite you to come and see what conditions we are suffering right now. I'd even make you a plate of my spaghetti. We've not been shown any of the street records or the construction. We were told that there were chunks of asphalt that were found in the sewer on Bonham Circle. However, no one on our street has any asphalt in the driveway. We were told that Gleason Avenue sewer connects into Bonham Circle. I ask you to inquire on the construction of Bonham and Gleason. Thank you for your time.
One point of clarification, I was advised that, or led to believe that we had denied the claim this afternoon, I have not seen the letter. If it's still under, if the letter says it's still under investigation, then it's still under investigation. Sorry, I misspoke.
I have the letter.
And this afternoon, Dick did say, "Check with Mike," so Dick doesn't do the actual...
Okay. Any questions for me?
So that means right now it is still under investigation, then? Is that what we're assuming, Dick?
If that's what the letter says, that's what's happening.
Very good.
That's not what you said this afternoon.
I had not seen the letter, I was led to believe that you had got it denied, I was led to believe your claim had been denied, you had the letter.
And I think, you know, and I'm not trying to argue with Claudia, I think you indicated that it was denied and, or somebody here did, and then Dick said, "If that's what it says, it is, but I need to check with Mike," was exactly what he said, so.
Right here.
Yeah, I believe you, I'm not saying it, doesn't say that, I'm saying that Dick doesn't make that decision and Dick said, "If that's what, if it was denied, then it was denied," but he said, "I have to check with Mike," because he didn't know, so the letter indicates otherwise.
Thank you.
Art Hill, 327 Golden Oaks Drive. I wanted to thank you for passing the budget tonight. You know, the budget is about 6,000 lines of information containing the works that 489 employees and numerous contractors and service people do throughout the course of the year, recorded in about 104 cost centers, rolling up into about seven funds, put together so one executive can say, "This is a budget," to get the approval subsequently of five council members. It's not something that's easy, it's not something that is always fun. I've been doing this for about 34 years. We've gone from 14 column spreadsheets to Excel spreadsheets, that's a nice change. It is a process that is, the success depends upon the trust and it depends upon the experience and the willingness of everybody involved to contribute to the process. I've enjoyed contributing to this process for the City of Council Bluffs for the last six budgets. About six months ago, I made the decision that 2015's budget was gonna be the last one I do for the City of Council Bluffs. And I was saying to my wife that February 24th is gonna be a great day, it's the last budget that I'll have to do. Well, I was a little premature by just two weeks, but, you know, March 10th, last budget that I have to do or will do. As I said, I've always enjoyed the opportunity to do this. I'll make sure that my successor knows just how much fun one can have, standing up here and doing it. But it is something that, I mentioned the 489 people, rolling up into the funds and so forth, it's something that's not a one-person thing, it's all of us contributing to it. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to do it and I hope the next person has as much fun as I did. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Art.
Thanks, Art.
Anybody else? Anybody from the council? For Jim Nelson? Meeting's adjourned.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, we take pride in our community in volunteering our time to helping individuals, families, and businesses succeed. We are Council Bluff's people, operating at Council Bluff's Bank to help Council Bluff's be a better place to work and live. Hometown banking, the way it used to be.